Good evening. I would like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Education to order. Ms. Hibbs, would you call it up?
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Polan?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Felder?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see you make it.
We have several presentations this evening, and the first one is a presentation for National Teacher Day by Tiffany Richard and Mr. Kendall. I see him coming.
Yeah, I'm just going to quickly introduce everyone to Tiffany Richard. She is a teacher at Olathe East, and she was the 2012 Kansas Teacher of the Year. And so she has a few words about National Teacher Day.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to speak and for letting me start off the night. This is so exciting.
No one ever says that.
I'm going to start by telling you a story about a little girl. And this is a little girl who started kindergarten and was so excited about her first day. I'm sure we can all remember the first day of kindergarten and how excited we were to start school. And she loved the day of singing songs and coloring in her coloring book, but she was really waiting for recess, when she got to get on those swings and those slides and all that play equipment she'd been looking and looking at for that whole summer waiting to go. And so when recess came, she lined up and went outside and was so excited to run around and start playing, but she noticed that there were these boys that were really loud, and they were running all over the place. And then all of a sudden, they started running towards her and chasing her, and she had no idea what to do. So she ran to her teacher and just stood there for protection. And her teacher said, "It's okay. They're just boys. They're just running. They're playing. You're fine." She didn't know what to do, so she just went and sat down at the bench for the rest of the period. Went back inside, enjoyed the rest of the day, that wonderful snack from the Snoopy container. And so the next day, she was still excited about going back to school, but she was pretty apprehensive about recess. However, as recess time comes, she gets more and more nervous. And as the students line up, the teacher tells her that they're going to stay inside for recess today. She thinks, "That's awesome. There's this great kitchen in the back, and I get to play with it all by myself." But the teacher has a different plan. She tells the little girl that they're going to play like boys today. And that doesn't really make any sense to this little girl, because there's a perfectly great kitchen in the back. So why would they want to play like boys? Well, the teacher tells her the boys like to run and chase each other. So this teacher gets down on her hands and her knees and starts chasing the little girl around the classroom. She's not so sure what to do, but she thinks it's pretty funny to have a teacher chasing her on her hands and knees. So she starts laughing and running and having a really good time. And when the teacher tags her, she's not even that scared of it anymore. So then the next day comes, and the teacher again says, "We're going to stay inside again." So they stay inside, and today the teacher says, "We're going to be really loud," because boys are loud sometimes. And the little girl has no idea, because in her house, you don't yell inside the house. That's not allowed. But her teacher starts yelling and chasing her around again, so she figures, "I better do what my teacher wants me to do." So she starts yelling and running around. And so they continue to do this for a few more days until she says, "I think you're ready to go outside." So as she gets outside, the boys start running towards her, and she knows what to do. She starts running too. And then she starts laughing and yelling and having the greatest time. And then she runs over to the swings and the slides and has a fantastic day at recess. If it were not for that teacher going beyond her classroom expectations, that little girl would have learned to fear recess and then to fear school. Instead, that little girl learned that she could overcome her own fears, and that school is a safe place with teachers there to guide her way. That experience set the stage for a successful school career where the little girl wasn't afraid to take on new challenges and learn new things. Although in later years, she may have even gotten in trouble a few times for talking too much. She may have learned her lesson a little too well. As you may have guessed, that little girl was me. Anyone who knows me, especially my students, laugh as soon as they hear that could have possibly been me. I'm known as a really outgoing and sometimes a little loud person. But I've spoken to many groups now, and I can think that my success that I've been able to have today was because of those teachers who nurtured me and pushed me to be the very best I can. I'm sure that every one of you, as I'm telling the story, is thinking back to your teachers, those who nurtured you and who pushed you and who helped shape you into that successful person you are today. I could not be more proud to place my name alongside all of those teachers. Teachers who go above and beyond to ensure their students not only succeed but flourish, especially like the teachers here in Olathe. Olathe, as you know, is a school known for quality education. When I was traveling across the state as Teacher of the Year, every time I said I was from Olathe, I would hear, "Oh, that is a great district for education." Much of that greatness is due to the quality of our teachers. Students have shared their own experiences with me about moving into Olathe from other districts. Mark told me that when he was in seventh grade, he moved in, and he had really low grades. His teachers in Olathe said, "You're a really smart kid. I don't understand why you have such low grades." And they worked with him, and they pushed him and gave him that positive feedback. And Mark is now a student in my biology class with an A, who loves coming to school and has plans for college. Orion came into our school in the middle of this year, and he shared that he started in math and started getting really bad grades, because he had come in during this transition time. His teacher told him, "You're just missing some concepts. Come in before school. Stay with me after school, and we'll get you caught up." That teacher re-taught him everything that he had missed in between, and that student now has an A in math and loves coming to school at Olathe East. And in October, one of my avid students was removed from her home, placed into foster care in another district. And I've remained in contact with her, and at first, she told me that she was really excited about her new school, because her classes were so much easier at that school. And her teachers weren't that concerned if she turned her things in. However, by February, she had changed her tune. She said that she wasn't really doing as well there as she had at Olathe East. I asked why that could be when her classes were so much easier. And she said that her teachers didn't really give her any challenging assignments, and she didn't think she was learning anything new. And she said she used to really complain about all the teachers that pushed her and made her turn in her work and made her do things over again. But now she knows those teachers really did care about her, and they believed in her. She knows that good teachers make all the difference. Our high quality of teachers here in Olathe doesn't happen by accident. Teachers in Olathe know that we are appreciated. In Olathe, we are treated as the professionals that we are. We have good administrative support who back us, not only in our classrooms, but beyond. For example, when a group of teachers got together and were concerned about so many students falling through the cracks who weren't turning in their assignments, they thought, "We need to do something to help these kids." So they planned, once a week, to have an after-school time where those kids could come in and get extra tutoring. They brought this idea to the administrator, and the administrator immediately was positive and excited about the idea. These teachers were willing to give up their time to help these students. But that administrator showed how much teachers are appreciated by giving them that extra pay and support for those students. Another way we are shown support is through our collaboration time with other teachers and those goals that we can set for ourselves, so that we can figure out what we need best to improve as teachers. So many new ideas from so many accomplished teachers who have all the same ultimate goal to ensure our students achieve. The time devoted to collaboration shows us that this district truly appreciates our experience and expertise. There are other examples, such as our ability to earn points on the salary scale and high-quality professional development, the master's program in the district. For this support and all that you do, we would like to thank you. Of course, the most immediate appreciation we receive is from our own students, and we do get some appreciation from them, especially in the early years with the hugs and the colored pictures. However, it's the nature of kids to not necessarily appreciate what they have at the time. As any one of us can say, it was probably years after we'd left our own home that we finally appreciated our parents' chores and curfews and all of those expectations they had on us, and we finally thanked them for that. However, students aren't usually around to tell us later on what we really did for them. Of course, we get the occasional note or visit, but we are busy, and going back to thank our teachers isn't something that we consider. Recently, I ran into a former student at Walmart, of course, and he had graduated from college and already started a job. I don't know where the time goes. And he remembered a lab that he had done in chemistry class with me and said it really made a difference for him, because he learned that he could come up with good new ideas and do his own experiment. He's a great kid, but I would have never heard that story if I hadn't just randomly bumped into him at Walmart. As teachers, we plant the seeds, but we rarely get to see how those seeds grow and how our nurturing helped those seeds to flower. As teachers, we know this, and we continue year after year to give everything we have to each new set of students. We don't expect appreciation, because as every teacher will tell you, we do it for the kids. However, teachers do deserve to hear praise and appreciation for all that they do. For the teacher on her hands and knees, chasing a scared little girl, and the teacher coming in early and staying late to give students extra help. The teacher who notices when a child's demeanor changes and investigates to make sure that child is safe. The teacher who gives up her evenings to attend sports and events of her students. The teacher whose spouse laments the extra money that went, once again, to some classroom supplies. The teacher who works to ensure that every student leaves the classroom a better student. We should thank them. So what can you do to show your appreciation? As board members, you are giving your own valuable time to ensure our schools are good places to teach and to learn. And we know you work with the NEA to make sure that we have good benefits and salaries, and we thank you for that. However, I invite you to do a little more. Come and visit us in our classrooms. Just a few minutes of your time would make such a difference for us. I realized this when I planned my school visit, and I thought, "These teachers are so busy and have so much going on. I don't want to burden them by bringing a group of teachers into their classrooms." And I sent out the email, and I got nothing but positive responses. And teachers even said, "I'm doing this great lesson at this time. Could you please come into my classroom right now?" Because we crave that validation. We crave that feedback. If you could just come in, do a little walk-through around the school, stop into a classroom here and there, give us a smile, give us a thumbs up, I tell you, it would make such a difference for us, just to know that we have so much support and just that positivity. We want you in our classrooms. We want you to see all that we can accomplish. And more importantly, we want you to see all that our students can accomplish, because as any teacher will tell you, we do it for our students. Thank you so much.
And now we know why you were Teacher of the Year.
Isn't Tiffany a fantastic speaker? I'm so proud that she is a member of Olathe NEA and that I was able to call on her. You can see how incredibly articulate she is. National Teacher Day is Tuesday, May 6th, and so I just want to make sure and acknowledge that and ask the community to provide words of encouragement to any teacher that community members know. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2.02, it will be the presentation by Rita Lyon and Connie Smith on our technology plan.
Well, thank you so much this evening. I'm going to just keep very quiet and turn this over to Connie Smith. She's our Director of Instructional Technology. She is really the person behind this whole plan, because she really helped me put this all together, and we really owe this plan to her, so I'm going to let her lead.
Good evening. I'm going to briefly share some information about the district's technology plan, which we submit every three years to the Kansas Department of Education. The process of reviewing and submitting an updated technology plan every three years allows the Technology Division to conduct a collaborative review of policies, mission, vision, and goals. It also allows us to assess whether we've met prior established goals from the previous plan, where we need to complete additional work, and establish new goals for the upcoming three-year timeframe. And finally, it is a required element to be able to continue to receive E-Rate funding from the federal government, which is a substantial amount for our district. There are three major reporting areas that are required in the plan to the state. They include infrastructure, curriculum integration, and professional development. And I'll briefly describe a sample of the prior plan's goals, as well as the proposed goals and components for the new plan. The first area is technology infrastructure. And as you can see, we've highlighted some of the major accomplishments from the 2011-14 tech plan. We virtualized many of our critical servers, our app servers and our web servers, and this has provided both efficiency and a more stable environment for backups throughout the district. We've moved from a rather archaic network, the Novell network, to a Windows-based network, and that was done in the fall of 2011. And again, this has provided for both greater efficiencies and compatibility with many Windows applications. Technology has increased both our outside internet connection bandwidth and as well as the internal data lines supporting our buildings and between buildings across the district and for the entire enterprise network. We've also installed a new disaster recovery system, our Avamar system, which has greatly increased our reliability and the confidence and the stability of our network. Over the past three years, we've moved solely to a voice-over IP system for all of our telecommunications services across the district in all buildings. And finally, as a part of the move to Windows in Windows Network in the fall of 2011, we've moved to all of our staff to a cloud-based email. Some of the new proposed goals and objectives for the 2014-17 tech plan are those included in three required areas by the state, and those three required areas are administrative hardware and software, network reliability and expansion, as well as network infrastructure, services, and resources. As you know, we've implemented a new HR payroll and core financial software system, and there are still several components in Phase 2 of that implementation, which will be finalized in the next year. We're on track to implement the new student information system in just a few months now, EduPoints Synergy software, and we're training all applicable staff in that regard currently. And this software will also have secondary phases of implementation following in the next few years. We're moving our redundant failover system from the Education Center to our new tech support center, and of course, leaving the second system over at WT Tech, WD Tech. Technology will be working to move all staff personal and shared files on the network to a cloud-based storage, and this will allow our staff to access files off-site, as well as allow for more shared access between staff at individual buildings. We, as you know, are heavily involved in supporting the opening of Millbrook Elementary, as well as planning for High School Number Five. And in the fall, we will be supporting BYOD access for all four high schools, for all students, as well as supporting increased access for both staff and student devices on the network. The second major area required by the state is curriculum and integration. And again, as you can see, some of the highlights of the major accomplishments from the 2011-14 plan. We've created three stable platforms from which teachers can choose to manage classroom materials, as well as provide new learning opportunities for students via Moodle, WordPress, and Modo. We've developed technology teams at all of our school buildings to support staff with not only integrating technology, but assisting with troubleshooting and training that's much needed in all school buildings. Our CLA programs at the elementary level are based on NETHs, our National Educational Technology Standards, and reviewed and revised regularly. And as you know, we offer a CO3 program for cyberbullying, cyber safety, and cyberethics, and that is also a required element to receive E-Rate funding. And we, of course, have sought to appropriately integrate technology in all curriculum areas across the district. Some of the new highlighted goals in the 2014-17 Plan for Curriculum and Integration are identifying how to best increase student technology access. And as you know, we are in the process of trying to identify exactly what that best access is through our Technology Action Plan initiative. As part of that process, we will be bringing a report to you in June for consideration for that. As mentioned, we are providing BYOD access for our high school students in the area of curriculum integration. And then finally, we will be utilizing the new Lesson View component of our new student information system. And in essence, that's creating a data warehouse of technology-infused lessons that are aligned with our board-approved curriculum. And this is a piece that we are extremely excited about. We have not had an efficient or an affordable way to do that until now, and so teachers are going to be extremely excited about that piece. The final component that's required in the tech plan by the state is professional development. As you can see, some of the highlighted areas for the past plan, completion of our educator personal technology use proficiency standard by nearly 100% of our teachers across the district. And these are now considered to be just an expectation of all new teachers coming into the district. We have continued to align all of our professional development provided across the district with district goals and building school improvement plans and via our annual needs assessment at each building, providing just-in-time technology for both certified and classified staff. Some of the highlighted proposed goals in this area include using the research-based CMR technology integration model, and that will be critical really for all of our staff as we begin to increase additional technology in students' hands across the district. We'll be working with Teaching and Learning Division to train IRTs and coordinators and directors and administrators to embed technology professional development in everything they do in upcoming years. And of course, we are continuing to offer many, many technology professional development sessions through Summer Conference and through awareness and training at our building site councils and BLTs. Part of the requirement is also to provide professional development to administrators and our classified staff for administrative software, and of course, that will be a big component of the student information system, and that planning and training is going on as currently. And finally, the impact of the Technology Support Center in each of those three required areas is readily apparent. Our infrastructure goals are continued to be supported by our new Network Operations Center at the new building. We will be able to provide many new learning opportunities with the additional space that's provided by our two learning center rooms, as well as our tech lab that's pictured there. And as we really vastly increase our student and staff access to technology, there will be, of course, an increased need for support, and we have many rooms for that type of support for our technicians at the new building. So as you can see, we've been pretty busy over the past three years, and we don't see an end to that coming. But we are excited. We have the opportunity to both make these kinds of goals, as well as appreciative to have the backing of both the board and our district's patrons to accomplish them. And I'd be happy to address any questions or comments, as well as Rita.
Board members?
Well, it distresses me to hear that Novell Networking is outdated, because that's the hardest test I've ever taken when I got my, I was a network administrator, believe it or not, at one point in time, but I feel ancient now. The cloud-based email system, does it allow our employees to access email on their personal devices? You could do it even without cloud-based as well, right?
Yes, they have access on all personal devices.
Can you explain a little bit more about CMR and the data warehouse? Data is a big word right now, but...
I'll start with CMR. CMR is our substitution, augmentation, modification, redefinition. It's a research-based technology integration model, which we are implementing right now with our teachers that are involved in the Technology Action Plans. And that involves a teaching-above-the-line initiative is what we are calling that, and rather than enhancing what we're doing in the classroom by just substituting and augmenting with technology, taking the time to consider how we can modify and totally redefine what we're doing in the classroom with technology. And I think you've probably heard it before, but instead of buying $1,000 pencils, what can we do with technology that really makes a difference and impacts student learning? And so that's the teaching-above-the-line initiative that is backed by the CMR model. Lesson View is a component of the student information system. We have Teacher View, we have Parent View, we have Student View, and those are the gradebook pieces, as well as the online access to grades for students and parents. And a fourth component of that is Lesson View, and that'll be in Phase 2 in the fall, late fall, and that will be a way for teachers to upload lessons that they have tested and proved in their classrooms. It'll go through a sort of a Netflix kind of rating system for district coordinators and whoever has access to that to say, "Yes, I approve of this particular lesson, and it's at a particular level of technology integration," so that then the rest of the district staff can be ensured that it's, you know, a great lesson to implement.
That's great. And will it replace parent access, then?
Parent View replaces parent access. And then students have a new component they have not had before with Student View.
I don't know if you're aware, but Macs don't do well with parent access on printing the assignment piece. Has anybody ever told you that? It's jumbled on the screen every time.
I don't think I've heard that before, but we can check it out, but you only have about another 30 days to do that anyways.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm just, I'm excited to hear there's, hopefully it'll be more compatible. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy. Connie, you talked a little bit about the E-Rate funding. Can you give us an idea about how much funding we receive?
About $300,000 approximately per year.
Yeah, we're at the pretty lower tier of E-Rate reimbursement. E-Rate reimbursement is based on your free and reduced lunch percentages within your district. So even though we've grown in that area a lot in the district, we are still at one of the bottom tiers. But we are getting just a little under $300,000 of reimbursement on those dollars, so it's definitely worth filing for.
And then how are we spending those? Are those going towards salaries?
No, they go back into the general fund to offset the costs of your internet lines, your data lines, your phone lines, all of that very large expense for the district.
Okay, thank you.
That's federal funding, not state.
That's federal funding. It's actually, it's actually from the taxes on the, that they pay, each provider pays to the FCC. Goes to schools, libraries, and hospitals.
And my head is often in a cloud when it comes to technology. You had mentioned a couple of different times that is required by the state. Maybe just to answer that question, if we meet the requirements, obviously, we gain some funding? No? Or if we don't, do we lose anything?
You have to have an approved technology plan on file in order to even apply for E-Rate reimbursement. So if you don't have this plan on file, you can't even apply. Now, just because you apply doesn't mean you get the funding. There's a lot involved with that application, and like I said, a lot of it is based on your free and reduced lunch count. We have, you know, some neighboring districts that probably aren't applying at all, because their free and reduced lunch percentage just isn't high enough. But you first have to have this on file. You have to also have policies, which we have in place, for the Child Internet Protection Act. That's another component of that that we talked about with CO3. Then you can make the application to the federal government for the reimbursement.
There was a short time when the state of Kansas did give us a little bit of technology money years ago, but there's nothing from the State Department that requires this plan that provides us any dollars in the formula.
Well, the plan itself is a three-ring, very nice report, so, you know, it's kind of not fair to, you know, for time, we have to dumb it down to this, but it's a beautiful document that really benefits us beyond funding, right? So, great job, Connie. You did a great job.
Connie did a marvelous job.
And every page made sense.
You got it memorized.
It was, it was big.
It was on his nightsien for a month, right?
Real quick, Connie, since I no longer have kids in school and don't access this stuff, walk me through how a parent would access their child's assignment on line.
There'll be a, through the summer, we'll There'll be a, through the summer, we'll be advertising the website, and it will be a web base, just very similar to Parent Access.
Like I said, I...
You don't have Parent Access. So a website, and then they will be given, they'll log on and create a password, and they'll have access to all of the teachers for their students. And they'll just click, and there they are.
All the assignments and everything will be on there. Okay, thank you.
It's very, it's very good. The NHI are the ones that you pay attention to, not the... Because the kids don't tell you that they didn't hand it in, but you can see it, so I do it really.
I have to say, kids really don't like it.
Good. Must be good news.
Connie, under the curriculum integration, the BYOD access for all high schools, kind of expand on that a little bit. So what is that going to give the students? What are they going to be able to do? What aren't they going to be able to do? And just kind of curious from that. And then even the bullet point above that, the increased tech access for students of all three levels, what, help me understand that a little bit more.
Okay. We'll start with BYOD. In the fall, we will provide BYOD access, which means students can bring their own personal device, whether it's a cellphone, or an iPad, or a laptop, or a tablet, and access the district's network. And by the district network, I mean internet access. So they won't be able to access their network drives. When we move to that in the future, that would be a part of that, but that's just within our internal network. So they would have internet access in all of their classrooms. If they've stored files in the cloud, then of course they would have access to those files. I'm sorry, your second question was...
Well, just the bullet point above that, the increased tech access for students at all three levels. Is all three elementary, middle school, and high school, is that what you mean by all three levels?
Correct. And we are in the process right now of determining what that is and what that will look like. On the week of May the 12th or 13th, we have some summative discussions with staff that have been involved in the Technology Action Plans to get their feedback. We are prepared to act on the elementary level first, and that's what we'll be bringing. We have a pretty good idea of what staff is going to recommend at the elementary level, and that's what we'll be bringing to the board in June for recommendation to implement early fall in September at all of our elementary and preschool, early childhood centers. We'll take some additional time in the fall then to take a look at middle level and what that looks like. And same thing for high school level, as far as increased access in each of the curricular areas in those buildings. And that, we're not at a point where we know exactly what that looks like right now.
Okay.
And that's through our 2013 bond funds.
Okay. So my question with that was, is the BYOD thoughts, that's a middle school and elementary school also? Is that kind of what you're...
No.
No?
No.
No relation to that?
No relation to that.
Okay. Is there any thought of offering that, being able to bring your own devices at the elementary or the middle school?
I think the other piece of work that's going on right now, led by Connie and Rita, is that we are, you know, doing the proof of concept with devices that would be appropriate in the classroom. And it would be our proposal at some point soon, that we would come to you and be able to provide devices for those other levels in the classroom. Not a bring your own, but to do it as a school district.
We really want to give a chance for BYOD to really kind of flesh itself out at the high school and see how many students we have that want to bring their own devices, how many students maybe don't have a device of their own that we need to provide some access for. So we would really like to roll this BYOD out of the high school, really get a flavor for what that looks like and what that can do for us, before we really make a firm decision of what we need to do at the high school. Middle school, could it possibly end up being some BYOD? Sure, that's always a possibility. We just aren't quite there yet. We've got elementary, I think, pretty well nailed down, we think, but those other two levels we're still working on.
And obviously, we couldn't be responsible for the security of those devices kids bring to school. Do we have some way of making sure parents understand if they choose to send an iPad to school, that their student's responsible for maintaining the security of it?
We have, with Connie's assistance, this fall through the TAPS Plan, we have put together a nice document that has been sent home for students that tested the BYOD early on, and then we've rolled it out for seniors. So we've made that available to the building principals that just kind of outlines, you know, what we're doing and what the responsibility of the student would be in the case that they brought their device and something happened to it. So there is a document that the principals have that they can give to students, and we strongly encourage, coming this July, when students start enrolling, that that document be handed out to students, so they are clearly aware of that. Students have been bringing these devices for a long time. They just haven't been getting on our network with them. They've been getting on the network with their service provider.
Right.
And this last question might be directed a little bit more at Dr. B here also. How much of our curriculum, how many of our books and everything are on, you can get to through technology, so you don't have to have an actual book? Because that really is kind of a direction we want to go at some point, is be able to virtually be able to walk in and not have to carry a big backpack and just have an iPad or something like that.
I think a lot more of our new resources, and certainly led by Luanne Hermrich in her division area as well, we have a lot of our new textbooks that are also online. Still being required to purchase the hard copy, but we also have it online, so a lot of students can access even things at home. And our goal would be to make a move as we get better at this, and the companies get better at this, that it be electronic, so students aren't carrying those backpacks that are weighing them down one way or the other for our students. So that is our goal that we will have.
Do you have an idea what percentage of that is available online today? Is it 5%, 10%, 25%?
I don't know if I know percentages. Luanne, do you have a percentage you could share?
I would estimate approximately 70% of the current texts we have are available in some form electronically.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've been purchasing, as we do the curriculum cycle and the resource selection cycle, so we've been purchasing, and certainly the new products have online access.
Very good.
It's something we actually look for, as Luanne leads different curriculum groups and our coordinators, they are looking for the technology related with that particular instructional material.
And then Connie, you mentioned a component, and I don't recall the name of it now, where teachers are submitting their lessons, and then other staff is able to...
Lesson View.
Lesson View.
It's a component of the Synergy Student Information System software.
Okay. We had a presentation a couple of months ago where a teacher had actually flipped her classroom, and we saw some video. Are we moving in that direction?
Flipped classrooms has taken off in many of our high school level, especially in a couple of our middle schools. We provided some professional development for our IRTs to assist with that, but there are a, I'm going to go out with maybe 10 to 12 teachers in our district that are really experimenting with that heavily right now. And then we'll have some Summer Conference sessions that are devoted to flipped learning classrooms.
So the changes that we're talking about tonight will facilitate?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, we're going to have a construction update. Mr. Hutchison and Mr. Thomason.
As you're about to see, there's a lot going on in the district if you haven't noticed already. So I'm giving Greg a few minutes to catch a breather, and then he'll join me for questions afterwards. Just to give you a quick overview of what's going on in the district and the way of construction, we'll start with the 2007 bond projects. Everybody kind of doesn't realize we're still finishing up our prior bond issue. We saw a presentation of Millbrook Elementary. Millbrook is right on schedule, actually. We've gone through punch lists. There's only a couple items on the exterior, and we have a little bit of parking work to do and landscaping work to do, but the building's just turned out beautiful. Furniture arrives in May, and will be open for business come August when school begins. Technology Support Center, as Connie had mentioned, also is in that same stage of completion, actually a little more. Their landscaping is predominantly in. We have some additional trees that have to go in there. They're building the network, and will be occupied sometime around July 1st. Finally, we have food production, which has been the victim of weather, but we do have our north addition is done. They're making great strides on that south addition. This is the front of the building. This is the completed addition. We expect it to be done the end of May. However, some of the mechanical systems, we're waiting for school to get out so that their production isn't going on. So in June, July, we'll do some of the mechanical pieces related to that. Moving on to Bond 2013, High School Number Five, the design work is going just spectacular. It's a really great joint venture, SHW and Hollis and Miller. We couldn't ask for a better partnership in designing the school. Later this month, and around the 23rd of May, we'll be doing interviews for construction managers, who's that third key consultant to get on board with the team, so that we can move into more detailed design for the building. The first six, as we called them, the first six elementaries that we did the security, secured entrances on are all, I'll call them complete. There's a little bit of punch list items to do. Bentwood Elementary with their new entry. And you'll notice each school does a little something different with their old admin area. Basically, to create that secured entrance, we had to, in these cases, we took some classrooms that were unoccupied, and we created a new admin area that the pinch point could go into. And then the old admin area would become something different. Some have chosen flexible classrooms, some have chosen a computer lab, some just a traditional classroom. It was really left up to the principal to decide the needs that their particular school had. But each one is just a spectacular design, and I think what some of these pictures really show is the added space that buildings get. And also, this vestibule, when you hear vestibule, you kind of think of this very small space that people are stepping into. It's a sizable space that, as you're pinched into this and you're waiting to go into the office, 20, 30 people could be in that space. So it's not like we're herding cattle into our schools or anything. Mahaffey has a little bit of additional work. Because of their site restrictions, we are actually putting kindergarten classrooms on the back in order to accommodate that secured entrance on the front. Once again, just wonderful atriums took care of some needed maintenance in these buildings where we had entryways that were just leaking from roof systems over the years, and we were able to create better space. Pleasant Ridge is another interesting lighting throughout these projects, some workrooms that are installed for flexibility as well. And finally, Sunnyside, you can see, many of these schools are very moved in already. It was Flower Day at a couple of these places, so I noticed there, as I was taking pictures, a lot there. You'll see that not much furniture's there yet. Some of the furniture's coming back into the building that we had stored, and other items will be delivered shortly. What we call six plus one are all the ones that are starting up now. It's the next phase and the next footprint of these secured entrances. Arbor Creek is actually one of the larger of the projects. It is receiving a flexible area, as well as a couple classrooms. As you know, that's one of our larger elementaries. And in the configuration of working on their building, it was easy to add that on. Cedar Creek, you can see, it slabs in, and steel erection is beginning and is nearly complete. Clearwater Creek is in the same stages, where the structure is up, and now they'll start putting the steel studs up in the weeks to come. Heatherstone, also in that same category. Heritage slab is in, now they're starting to bring steel on site. So we're well underway, heading into the summer on these projects. Manchester Park also has some additional space, and is, the slab is in, and steel will be coming shortly. Regency Place, had a little lag while we had to, you probably don't recall this, one of your many easements you approved was a water easement that we had to wait on before any construction could begin, because it goes right in the front of the, right in the front of the school where our construction was. So that is underway now, and they have their slab in place, ready to go. Next piece that we'll begin work on, it actually has barely started, is the views. Northview Elementary, for example, we are actually creating, at the bottom of your screen is, there'll be a new admin area and secured entrance, and media center in three classrooms. And then the old admin area that's buried deep in that building where we wanted to pull them out further will ultimately become restrooms, because these, this footprint has a lot of small bathrooms in between classrooms that are just basically outdated and will be torn out of the building. All these views are really two-year projects. We can't get through the building in the summer, but construction has begun there. The site is being prepped and waiting for the 23rd when those students leave and contractors can descend on the building. Westview, in order to accommodate a secured entrance, and it has probably the most compact admin area in our district, and a media center that doesn't work well with the school, they're expanding that admin area into the old media center, creating the entrance, and then building at the top of your screen a new media center and computer lab at the other end of the building. Once again, they are mobilizing on that site. And finally, Fairview, we are also creating the new admin area and pinch point to the front of the building, and that purple area up on the upper right is the old admin, will also become a bank of restrooms. Similarly, this building has these individual, very small bathrooms in between classrooms that will be torn out. The DAX, we have our, getting ready to order all of our graphics that go on the field. This isn't necessarily the final one, but some concepts of our name in the end zones and our logo at the center of the field, and markings for soccer and football. We are well underway at both SEBAC and ODAC. A lot of earth being moved, a lot of material going down in preparation for the turf to go in. Age Facilities is the next item, and I know you cannot possibly read this even when I zoom in on it, but the bottom line is, in addition to the new construction, we are actually working at 27 locations come May 23rd in a variety of projects that span 13 categories of work. Anything from HVAC system work, installation of lockers, lighting and ceiling replacement, epoxy flooring, and then we're going to do it all again next summer. Because as I've told you before, some things cannot be done at the same time, and this will span two or three years' worth of work. We have 81 days to do this, from the time the students leave to the time the students get back. And to me, that's all priceless. And why I think it's priceless is it's incredible to live in a community that gave such support for these projects, to have this amount of work going on benefiting our kids. We can't thank the public enough for the bond dollars to do this. August 15th is the target. That's that first half day of school that occurs in our district. Will everything be done? We will have school. I cannot guarantee everything will be done. Not every shrub will be planted, not every piece of lumber will be picked up from the back, but we will have school. That's the goal, is to have it all done. But I really believe there'll be some finishing touches and punch list items that will creep into the September timeframe. With that, I will ask Greg to join me to really answer questions that I could never possibly answer.
Greg, are you getting any sleep?
Absolutely. Get plenty of sleep. In reality, my job is relatively simple with your support and the staff. We've hired a lot of good architects and engineers and construction managers who are doing all the work. And then, none of this really happens without the principals in the building, that have been so patient, working with their staff, construction work going on around them, and keeping school going. So really, you know, there's a lot that passes across my desk, but I get plenty of rest. It's not that, it's not that hard.
Has there been any major issues or anything that's, other than some weather you mentioned, John, that's kind of set us back? Anything that we weren't anticipating at this point?
No, just the weather. And we anticipated the weather. It's always wet in the spring, just sometimes wetter than we'd hoped for.
I'd like to reiterate the thanks to the principals, because I've been on the site councils of a couple buildings that are in the middle of all of this, and the parents who serve on those site councils, they're very supportive, even in the midst of all the mess and everything. And it's our principals that keep it moving forward and keep the attitude positive. So I'd like to say thank you to them.
You don't get here without them. They keep the staff, you know, organized and keep the school safe as we're moving through it.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank staff, because as we end the school year, there is a lot of boxing up and moving that is going to go on, and teachers have just really pitched in, and they're getting ready to have everything boxed up so we could vacate the rooms and work on them.
That's a big job. Let me ask, with the bring your own device plans that we heard Connie present, I'm sure there'll be electrical plug-in need and demand increase for the fifth high school. Are we, is that on our radar?
Yes. Yes. And in fact, we're having our kickoff meeting next week on technology for the building. The building itself is now far enough along that we're beginning to bring other consultants, theater consultants, food service consultants. And Rita and her staff are sort of hosting the big kickoff meeting for technology next week. It's been in the conversation, but we're actually going to bring the consultants in next week and start working through the details of technology for the new high school.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will take our comfort break and return at 7:00 PM.
At this time, then, we will take our comfort break and return at 7:00 PM.
To help with this recognition. Tonight, we recognize Robert Brogdon Auto Plaza that has consistently been a strong partner with the Olathe Public Schools. The Brogdon team maintains annual support to the Wimmer Care Fund. This financial support allows students and their families to have assistance in times of need, which minimizes the impact on students and keeps them in school. The business supports the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Annual Autumn Breakfast and they do so at the gold sponsorship level. This June, the team is also once again committed to being the whole in one sponsor at the foundation's annual golf tournament. This semester, hundreds of students across the district saw their dedication through the support of the district's Martin Luther King Junior Contest. A highlight was their $1,000 sponsorship, which allows student awards for winning participants. Robert and Kathy Brogdon's children have attended Olathe Northwest and the couple has annually donated money to Northwest for scholarships. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation to Brogdon Auto Plaza for financial and volunteer dedication to the Olathe Public Schools. I'd like to ask Robert and Kathy Brogdon to come forward to be recognized. Thank you for all that you do. Next, we'll recognize Kathleen Wellhite, a retired Olathe South High School math teacher. Kathleen, if you could come forward, along with Olathe South Principal Phil Clark. Kathleen has been named a Kansas Master Teacher by Emporia State University. The award has been in existence since 1953 and fewer than 10 teachers are selected each year. To be eligible for nomination for Master Teacher, each candidate must have served at least five years in schools in Kansas as a teacher or instructional leader and have exemplified teaching or administrative effectiveness. Kathleen worked as a math teacher in the Olathe Public Schools for more than 30 years before retiring last May. And I hate to put you on the spot, Kathleen, but would you like to say a few words at
I can actually do 50 minutes without looking at a clock, but we'll keep it short. Since I have retired, it is even more important for me to thank the Olathe community. The Olathe School District has been phenomenal to me and I had a wonderful career and I must take this moment to just say thank you to all of you and to the district.
Next, I'd like to take a moment for recognition of the district's counseling program. Numerous awards have been received in this arena recently and we'd like to take a moment to recognize them. I'll invite everyone up individually, but please stay at the front for a group photo of all of our counseling-related honorees. I'd like to ask Marv Lee Collins, Janet Bocknick, and Jennifer Noteboom, counseling facilitators, to come forward to help with the recognitions tonight, along with Stephanie Dansko. First, we'd like to ask Lorinda Culpepper from Walnut Grove Elementary and Tammy Milkie from Olathe North to come forward. Lorinda and Tammy were each named Olathe Counselors of the Year and finalists for Kansas School Counselor of the Year. They were recognized at the annual Kansas State Department of Education Counseling Conference and finalists are recognized for school counseling innovation, effective school counseling programs, leadership, and advocacy sales, and contributions to student achievement. Congratulations to both of you. We would also like to recognize Sunnyside Elementary. David Kearney, if you could come forward. I know you've got a lot of supporters here tonight. If you could come forward along with your team. Okay, everybody, come on up. Sunnyside was recognized with the Kansas State Department of Education Standard of Excellence for School Counseling Award. The 2013-14 Standard of Excellence designation was awarded to only five schools in the state and Sunnyside was the only school to receive the recognition for three years in a row. The award recognizes comprehensive data-driven school counseling programs that are aligned with both the Kansas School Counseling and American School Counseling models. Congratulations to Sunnyside Elementary. And I'd also like to recognize David Kearney individually. Uh-oh, come on. The Kansas School Counselor Association selected him as a state recipient of the Principal This award recognizes outstanding principals for their support of school counseling and highlights the importance of the administrative role in delivering an effective school counseling program that promotes academic, social, and emotional growth and success of all students. And congratulations to all of our counseling honorees. Next, we'd like to recognize Jane Jones from Pioneer Trail Middle School. Jane, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Principal Elaine Carpenter. Jane was named the Executive Assistant of the Year by the Kansas Association of Middle School Administrators. The Kansas Association of Middle School Administrators in partnership with Interstate Studios recognizes the valuable contributions executive assistants and office staff play in the overall operations of a school building. The organization recognized individuals this spring who have displayed outstanding leadership, overall job performance, and interpersonal skills. And finally, tonight, I'd like to ask the Olathe East Talons Dance Team to come forward, along with Head Coach Kathy Alcorn, Assistant Coaches Lexi Glover, Darcy Hipsh, and Brian Penny, and Olathe East Principal Bill Weber. The Talons Dance Team earned high honors at the American Dance and Drill Team Competition. The Talons Junior Varsity and Varsity Dance Teams won 18 national championship titles at the National and International Dance Competition. They also won the Gussie Nell Davis Sweepstakes Awards. And I know, and I know your families are here tonight as well. We want them to stand and be recognized. Oh, they're already up there. We want them to stand.
There's a dad back.
It's always sad when everyone leaves us. I can't imagine why they don't want to stay. All right. It is time for public comments. At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, we reserve limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. We did not have anyone sign up prior to the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to provide some comments at this time? Seeing none, we will move on then to our action consent agenda items 5.01 through 5.06. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.06 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the consent agenda items. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Moving on then to action items bids, contracts, and agreements. I looked through these and thought, in an effort to move things along, we might go through, collect them all together for a vote unless there are some that you have your heart set on discussing individually.
Just a quick question for Mr. Thompson for 6.03. Won't take long.
Okay.
We can conclude it.
Okay.
Explain the alternates. What was accepted and what wasn't, just for the public's purpose.
Yes, sir. This is called a tennis complex?
Huh? Tennis courts?
This is called a tennis complex?
Yes.
Be patient. Bid alternates always confuse me a little bit, too. Here's what we, and I was just looking at these, because we have two bid alternates that are deduct bid alternates, one and three. These items were included in the base bid and we took an alternate price to remove them. Bid alternate number two was an add alternate, which added work to the contract. What we're recommending is that we accept the add alternate and reject the two deduct alternates, which leaves the material in the bid for what we're performing. Bid alternate one was for lighting at four of the tennis courts. That's in the base bid. We're rejecting the bid alternate to remove it. Bid alter number two was for vinyl coated fencing instead of just normal galvanized chain link fencing. That's an add and we're recommending that we take it. And then, because of the wind out there, and when you put wind screens up on a tennis court, it sort of becomes a big sail. We use larger, more reinforced poles for the fencing that's in the base bid. We're rejecting the bid alternate to remove that larger piping. So it's a little confusing when you have add and deduct bid alternates. We're rejecting the deduct alternates and approving the add alternate.
Thank you.
So no lighting and heavier poles?
The lighting is in the base bid, so we're leaving the lighting in the base bid. We're leaving the larger poles in the base bid. And we're adding vinyl coating to the fencing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there questions about any of the other items? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve items 6.01 through 6.12 as presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter to approve the action items 6.01 through 6.12. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right. We're moving on to additional action items 7.01. At this time, we need to nominate a board member to participate in the KASB nominating committee and we need a board member to participate in the legislative committee. So this first motion, well, first of all, we'll recruit some volunteers and then we'll make a motion to cease nominations.
So just to be clear, we're nominating individuals for two separate positions?
So we can, yes.
All in this first motion?
Can do them separately or together?
That's fine. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Well, I would like to nominate Mr. Shear for the legislative committee position.
You need a second?
No.
No.
But if you have any other nominations?
No.
And I would like to nominate Mr. McCune for the nominating committee.
And somehow, I don't anticipate anybody else raising their hand to self-nominate. Is that correct? If so, I would entertain a motion to cease nominations.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Shear to cease nominations. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right. So now, I would need a motion to appoint Mr. Shear to serve on the KASB Legislative Committee and Mr. McCune to serve on the KASB Nominating Committee.
So moved.
Who was that? I'm sorry?
Me.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Shear, you served this past year on legislative as well, right?
I did, yes.
Was it a lot of work?
It was three trips to Topeka, I believe, and then some other correspondence back and forth. But it was a great opportunity because you do get a chance to learn a little bit more about the entire state and their thoughts and views of what's going on with legislators, which a lot of times is very eye-opening. But it does, it is a great opportunity because it does give us a chance to voice from the Olathe School District, you know, our thoughts and ideas of what needs to be a focus from the KASB standpoint, of what is important to us from a legislative perspective.
You seem to enjoy it, so I'm glad you're willing to do it again.
Yes. One more time.
And I don't think I have a second yet.
I will second.
Yep. Go ahead.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Ms. Martin to appoint Mr. Shear to serve on the Legislative Committee and Mr. McCune to serve on the Nominating Committee for KASB. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
I think Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. 7.02 is action item regarding facility rental fees for 2014-15, and they represent no increase over our fees this year.
I move to accept the 2014-15 facility usage fees as presented, representing no increase over the prior year's fees.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Pollan to accept the 2014-15 facility rental fees. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes. Dr. Murray, on that, we've, in the past, we've gotten some information about what percentage has been used. Have we gotten, when was the last time you received that information? I'm just kind of curious. Now, with the fees in place, and again, these are very reasonable rates for the community to be able to use these, what kind of percentage are we being utilized?
We can bring that to you. It's about this time of year where she'll start to wrap that up. We'll have Denise Carpenter put those numbers. She has them, monitors it all the time, but we can give that final report to you for this year.
Items 7.03 through .05 are all student trips. Would you like to do these separately? Ms. Martin, no, together? All right.
I would move to approve 7.03 and through 7.05 as presented.
Second. A motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Martin to approve action items 7.03 through 7.05, which are student trips. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
All right. We are at that time of the agenda where we're talking about future action items, 8.01 through 8.14, and this is the opportunity for board members to pose questions as they would like. No questions? Obviously, we're getting very thorough information. All righty.
Quick on 8.02, demolition of metal building at Mill Creek. Assuming we're accepting that, assuming that might be just a net zero to the district.
I think for the first piece of that, for sure, in terms of the building disappearing, there will be some additional work to get the concrete slab out, but yeah, it should be positive toward the district for that, we hope.
Any other questions? All right. We have information written reports, which includes the Head Start Director's Report, and I think that's it. Any questions about that item? Topics for discussion, board members? We're not a very chatty group this evening. Ben, you're on. Dr. Barry?
I'll try not to be very chatty as well, and we find ourselves tonight just 15 school days from the end of the school year. So it is, we are definitely there at the tail end. And just a reminder, and I know you've gotten some information, but a week from this Sunday, we will celebrate commencement, graduation at all four high schools, and you will be participating in that. So that's a week from, that's two weeks from this Sunday.
Don't do that.
Not Mother's Day, it would be two weeks from this weekend. You know, even though we are toward the tail end of the year, there are a lot of things going on in our schools, and I highlight just a couple, just from the last 24 hours. But last night, the Wicked Awesome Science Event took place at Santa Fe Trail Middle School. That was just really fantastic night. They had food trucks, they had dancing outside, but inside, it was all science-oriented. Over 120 volunteers, not only teaching staff from Santa Fe Trail, but elementary schools of Olathe North, I mean, Olathe East. It was all throughout the district. We had teachers and volunteers helping in each of the classrooms. But then we had science-related businesses and groups from all across the metro, people that brought in dinosaur bones and telescopes and all of it. It was just really exciting. Student demonstrations from all levels. There were animals there, snakes, dissections, rockets, egg drops. I mean, it was just really kind of fun to see everything going on, and there were over 1,500 people that went through Santa Fe Trail last night. So really exciting. The other event was yesterday morning, and at noon, we had the regular assembly for recognition for students who are seniors graduating from the Advanced Technical Center. And they were so excited just to have that assembly in a very nice building, as opposed to the old shop where we'd had it the past couple of years because of construction. But one of the things when we see those students get recognized at this time of the year, 100% of our seniors that were there, that are in the program right now, is my understanding, are either going on to secondary education, whether that be Pitt State, Johnson County Juco, Kansas City-Kansas Automotive Program, Tulsa School of Welding, Missouri School of Welding, the list goes on and on, or they are going to be employed, already employed, putting their skills to use in a shop, KC Bobcat, a number of things, or they're going into the service. But 100% of those students know what they're doing walking out the door, and that was pretty exciting. They also announced a new partnership that we have that is between our Advanced Technical School here in Olathe, Pitt State, and Firestone of Kansas City. And they have selected students who will go to Pitt State to be in the program there, continue their work in automotive. Firestone is paying half of their tuition and providing spending money, which I thought that was a little bit of a neat twist, so that they can, don't have to get that extra job, they have, they can make it through college. But then, when they're done with that two-year associate's program, they come back to Kansas City to a job with Firestone. So again, outstanding things going on at that building. I thought it was pretty exciting. Next Tuesday night, the district will recognize and try to honor 87 staff members who are retiring from our district. It's a little difficult. I always find it challenging to try and recognize with a dinner people who have committed their lives, their professional careers, to educating kids in the Olathe community, and we'll try to do that next Tuesday night, but 87 that we'll be looking at. The other news I want to touch on briefly is that our legislators representing our community and across the state of Kansas returned to Topeka yesterday to begin the veto session. One of the things that we're watching, and that came out of the House Conference Committee report already, by a vote of 123 to nothing, is the Student Data Privacy Act. And Lea, you had a good question tonight, asking about data. That is a hot topic in the state. It is something that KASB has supported. It passed in the House side, and now we'll go to the Senate. It passed the House side 123 to nothing. But KASB says there are some details of the bill that they will help, again, it's a great service they provide, help break that out for us to know exactly what's happening, but it's just to protect that student data. You also heard, and they've been talking about in Topeka, that the April collections were down 93 million. I think that's going to become more of a concern for us in the state. Some talked today in the hallways evidently that they're worried that it will be down as much as 300 million by the end of the fiscal year, which is not too far away. That will be of concern to us in school districts. We are coming off a court case that says that full appropriations have to be paid, but in the past, when the state hasn't had enough money, they prorated the amount of money that we received in various areas. Or sometimes, in the past five to six years, we've had rescissions. So that would be of great concern to us as they move forward. The other piece that may come to a vote as quick as tomorrow, there's still some talk about the Common Core standards, and whether or not school districts could spend dollars moving forward. So again, we'll be watching that tomorrow as that might happen.
Dr. Barry, can I ask, rescissions are not an option this time, right? Because of the court case?
Well...
Or is that a wrong assumption?
No, the rescissions, the court case would be dangerous probably if they tried to take some of that back. But rescissions have come in the state of Kansas to say, we've been told that we were going to get $14 per pupil. That could be rescinded, and it could be a lower amount. That has happened to us in the past. The last thing I want to mention, and I don't very often call out an individual in terms of someone that appears on the HR report, but I did want to give recognition tonight to someone who has presented in front of you a number of times, has done a tremendous job for us in our district, but Lane Green is resigning to take another position in a school district close by. He's, again, been a valued part of our school district and performed so well for us, not only at a particular high school, but then providing leadership of all of our high schools in terms of athletics and activities. And we certainly wish Lane the very best as he goes to a new challenge. So I just wanted to take a moment to mention that. It's my hope he can get that school district turned around a little bit, so...
In short order, too, not, he's long-winded, so, you know, rein it in.
All right. So we are going to do executive session now, and I think we, as a board, need about 45 minutes, and Dr. Barry, how much?
30, please.
30?
How many?
30?
75 total. 75 minutes total.
We need to do a stand-up meeting. 8:45.
All right. So we would adjourn at 7:30 and come back at 8:45.
I'd move that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:45 PM in this room. The executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Mr. McCune to adjourn to executive session to return at 8:45 PM.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.